You all to the City of Warman Regular Meeting of Council. We are Monday, June 22nd, second day of summer. And I call this meeting to order. We're going to start with a present, a presentation to our, our youth representative. Oh my goodness, Janelle Johnson. Gary, do we have you there, Councilor Philchuck? Okay, hi, Janelle. Janelle, I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight. Okay, Gary, do you want to start? We can't hear you.
Well, welcome to council chambers and, and I'm covering here for Mayor Spence tonight. And again, we've had a year working with Janelle. I've had the opportunity to see her basketball all the way through to last year. Actually, last year, we had her win the Youth, Youth Award for the City of Warman. So here we are a year later after she took on this role at what City Council. And we're happy to award her with some flowers at a present and a big thank you for all she's done in speaking for the youth and hearing their voice and trying to get it to council. So thank you, Janelle.
Now, it's been such a pleasure for all of us to get to know you. And I know you have so many exciting plans for your summer and for your year ahead. We wish you all the best. You have done great things already in your, in the life that you've lived already. And we know that you're going to do great things ahead. So congratulations on your graduation. We'll see you on Thursday night as you traipse through the streets of Warman in a vehicle. We'll be cheering for you and have a great summer. We hope to catch up with you sometime in the summer, just for a little, for a proper goodbye. But for now, enjoy the, enjoy the flowers and bask in the glory. We sure appreciate all the things that you've done for us and the connection that you have to our, to our youth. Thank you, Janelle. Okay, is there any other announcements anybody wanted to make tonight? Okay, hearing none, let's move down to approval of the agenda, please. Okay, Council Peterson.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the agenda for the Monday, June 22nd, 2020 Regular Meeting of Council as presented.
Do we have a second here for that? Councilor Jones? Are we all in favor? Okay, thank you. Moving down to approval of the minutes, please, motion, please. Council Tully?
I'll make a motion that council adopt the minutes from the June 8th, 2020 Regular Meeting of Council as presented.
Do we have a second here for that? Councilor Beck? Is there any discussion or comments with the minutes? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Moving down to administration reports, we'll start with City Manager Smith. Sorry, just have to let Bob in here on his laptop. He was on his iPad there. Okay, Bob's in. Okay, City Manager Smith, the floor is yours.
Take me one second here.
Okay, this gives me a moment to thank Deputy Mayor Philchuck for, for tag teaming. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate that.
Thank you, worship. I have three items for council tonight for consideration. Number one is the Municipal Economic Enhancement Program. The province of Saskatchewan announced the MEET, a funding program to provide support to municipalities with their investments in infrastructure and to assist in stimulating the economy. City administration reviewed the 10-year capital budget, determined the best projects that may be eligible for funding, and provide three options for council's consideration. First project, the lagoon expansion improvement project, which is $18.1 million. The second ice surface, which is $8 million, and lift station number three, which is $2 million. That's the lift station that's located adjacent to the north drainage ditch, just off of Sixth Avenue North. So the first recommendation I have is in regards to the MEET program and that council entered into an agreement with the Ministry of Government Relations regarding the MEET funding utilization, utilizing the lagoon and expansion and improvement project as the application project plan.
Okay, so we have a motion in front of us. Who would like to put their name on that? Councilor Beck?
Thank you very much. So whereas the government of Saskatchewan and the City of Warman recognize that investments in public infrastructure are fundamental to the quality of life of residents of Saskatchewan and necessary to ensure continued economic growth. And whereas the government of Saskatchewan has implemented the Municipal Economic Enhancement Program 2020, BEEP, to, to stimulate the economy and create unemployment opportunities, be it resolved that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the Municipal Economic Enhancement Program 2020 Funding Agreement between the Government of Saskatchewan, Ministry of Government Relations, and the City of Warman. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Warman approve the submission of the City of Warman Lagoon Expansion and Improvement Project Plan as Schedule B to the MEET Funding Agreement.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second here? Council Tully? Council Tully? Any questions, comments? Hearing none, then? All in favor, all in favor then? Thank you. Next item?
The next item I have is the RCMP Multi-Year Plan. It's in regarding the annual adoption of the RCMP Multi-Year Plan, which is a planning tool designed to identify strategies and forecast expenditures over the next five years to ensure that adequate and effective municipal policing is provided in Warman by the RCMP. And so I have a recommendation that the RCMP Municipal Police Service Multi-Year Plan from April 1st, 2021 to March 31st, 2026 be adopted as presented to council.
Do we have a motion for that? Council Philchuck?
I'd like to make the motion that RCMP Municipal Police Service Multi-Year Plan for April 1st, 2021 to March 31st, 2026 be adopted as presented by the RCMP Operations Strategy Branch F Division, and the mayor be authorized to sign the agreement.
Okay, and do we have a second here for that? Councilor Beck? Is there any discussion? Council Peterson? Council Peterson, did you have a question? Oh, no. Council Tully, did you have a question?
Yeah, hopefully this is just a brief question. I, I understand that this is sort of an agreement for a five-year timeframe. And I'm just wondering, is it something that's, is it revisited yearly for an update? Like, is it a rolling plan or is it just this is it for five years and there'll be a new one five years from now?
Actually, every year council enters into, or reviews a five-year agreement with the RCMP. Same as what we would almost do with the, the five or 10-year capital plan. It's, it's, it's rolling, but it's, it's looked at every year to be revised. So it's, it's just a plan. There's, you're just signing the agreement. You're signing that you've reviewed the plan and that you're agreeable to everything in that five-year plan going forward, but it can change, comes back annually each year.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor then? Okay, thank you. Next item?
And the third item I have is a request for a sign by Route 11. I received a request from Route 11 to inquire if they could install a sign on the front of the building at 101 Clausen Street, which is the old library building. The size would be 16 feet by 18 inches, and it would be placed over the existing plywood area where a sign was previously located on the building. I do have a recommendation that City Council approve Route 11's request to place a, for the placement of a 16-foot by 18-inch sign on the front of the building at 101 Clausen Street, based on the version of the sign that was presented.
Okay, so then we have a motion in front of us. Council Philchuck?
I'd like to make the motion that the City Council approve Route 11's request for the placement of the 16-foot by 18-inch sign on the front of the building at 101 Clausen Street, the old library, based on the version of the sign presented, and further that Route 11 be responsible for placement of that sign.
Seconder? Council Tully? Do we have any comments? Council Philchuck?
Are we able to hear from, from Tracy on this one? She is listening in, if there's any more details to add to it?
Tracy? Can you come on?
I'm here. I believe I should stay as a black name there, and I'll just use my voice. Yes, thank you for, if we're going to approve this, it's just something that will give the building a little bit more of an aesthetic stating what we do in the building. We've had a little bit of a struggle here over the past few months, obviously, as a lot of places have. We can no longer afford a big sign outside the building. So we thought at least that would, this would draw the attention to the fact of what we do. So it, I think it would be a worthy thing. Both myself and Ray are going to be the constructor and maker of the sign. So it'll look very artsy.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions of Tracy while she's on, on the line? I'm not seeing any, so thank you, Tracy. I'll call a question, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Did we lose Trevor?
He had a conflict, so he'll come back in in a couple of minutes here.
Oh, I see. Okay, sorry about that. Okay. City Manager Smith, is there anything else?
No, that's everything, your worship. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, City Clerk Johnson, your report now.
Okay, there I am. I get the video going. Hey. All right, so my report is on election 2020. There's a few things for council to consider. One is the criminal record check. It is, oh, I'm sorry, I thought I lost you guys for a second. The criminal record check is not necessary to have on the nomination papers unless council makes a resolution to do so. So if there's any questions or discussion about that.
Is there any questions? Council Beck?
Yeah, so just to be sure, Don, with this, you're, like, you're recommending to us that, that that not be required? Because I don't think in, in previous, in previous elections that that has been a requirement, if, if I'm correct on that.
That's right. It's usually, if council wants it, it could be put in, we could put a bylaw in, in that a credit, criminal record check is done. It is not necessary to do it, and usually they're based upon name only. So if somebody has a common name, there could be stuff that comes up that isn't really relevant to themselves. It's not based upon fingerprint.
I think maybe what Council Beck is suggesting is that we've never had it, so do we have to make a motion to not have it?
No, no, it's just clarification.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other comments there or questions? Okay, hearing them, next item?
Next item is the polling location for the 2020 election. And the Legend Center is my recommendation at 701 Centennial Boulevard as the polling location.
Okay, and that we would, do we need to make a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, so do we have a?
But we don't, we actually have everything in one big motion at the end.
Okay, so is there any questions about that? Hearing that? Okay, next item?
Okay, next item is the polling map. So this is going to be very different compared to other years. The polling map, after going back and forth with the city clerks, is not necessary because we have one polling location this year. And when, with us using the electronic vote counters, we don't necessarily have to split the city up into individual polls and keep track of the ballots in each one of those polls. Because the ballots will all be coming into one location. We'll separate them out to go and vote in a vote marking area, ballot marking area, and then they will put them into the vote counting machines at the end. So it's going to be more of a first come, first served thing. You don't have to wait for your lineup and your location to go through. It's like first come, first served, and you're in. It should speed up the lineups, hopefully.
Okay, is there any questions about that?
I just have a question about that. Some of that was used for data in the past, too. Now, so will it be able to use that information or pull out that information about where votes? Like, how the breakdown was done? I know that with the political, or with provincial and the federal election, that, that becomes important just to see, see if there's trends all the way through.
What areas of the city are voting? We'll still have all their registrations coming in. So if we wanted to, we could sit down later on, go through and break it up and see where they are coming in, because when they do register, it'll, they'll be registering their, look at their identification and stuff to know which part of the city they're in.
Okay, so right now, though, it's not set up that it would give you that data unless you really weed through it after?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, next item?
Advanced poll dates is the next item I have there, and I have a list of advanced poll dates. I also included the dates that we would use for the special polls, as there are going to be advanced polls as well. So if there's any questions about those?
Any questions? Okay, hearing none?
And the location would be at the Brian King Center for the majority of them, and then the two special care homes in Towne, the Menonite and the Diamond Care Home.
Okay. Next item?
The next part, I guess, with the special care homes, if they're comfortable with having a setup advanced polls there, I guess that's something we'll play a little bit closer to the time, but that was pretty much taken care of in the last one.
Okay, so under, so we're at nominations now?
Yeah, right nominations. My recommendation is that occupation of candidates not be on the nomination and ballots. This is no longer required according to the legislation. It was changed this year.
Okay, is there any comments there? Okay, next item?
Order of the ballots. And after Committee of the Whole Meeting, we have three options. We could either have alphabetical, random, or drawn from a reciprocal. And I went back to the good old keep them in alphabetical by surname. We are changing things up quite a bit, and it was recommended, let's kind of keep a couple of things the same as possible.
Is there any comments? Okay, next item?
Disclosure of campaign contributions and expenses. This is not something we've done in the past, and it's not required to be for us to do it. My recommendation is to not require us to have a bylaw that states the disclosure of the expenses and campaign contribution.
Okay, any comments there? Okay, next item?
Voters list. Voters list, we kind of covered it at Committee of the Whole again. It's quite costly and it changes significantly. So my recommendation is not to use a voter's list. Well, our voters list this year will register voters at the polls as we have in the past.
Any comments? Okay, remuneration?
Next piece is the renew, yeah, remuneration for the election workers. My recommendation is to increase the rates by $2 an hour, kind of stay in level with the rest of the province and a little bit below the provincial, stay fairly competitive, seeing as it's two weeks before us.
Okay. Any comments there? Okay, and next item?
Okay, my next one is regarding committee and council meetings and volunteering during nomination and the, and the election date. So my recommendation is to continue with the two regular meetings of council, one on October 13th and one on October 26th, noting that administration will only be bringing information that requires immediate attention to these meetings for council to consider counseling the Committee of the Whole Meeting on October 19th, and that all candidates will refrain from volunteering for city facilitated, facilitated events during the nomination date and the election date.
Okay. Is there anything there that anyone wants to discuss? Council Shram?
Yeah, just my question is, if, is this, I guess the thing of volunteering for city events, does that go for all candidates? And that will be known to all, right? What I'm saying is, we know that we can't, because I mean, other people who have not been on council can. That's, I'm just asking for that clarification.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that, like, when we send out the candidate's package, that it is listed in there, that they are not to be volunteering for city facilitated events. I guess for everybody across the board. I don't want to just make lines to people who are already on council.
I just, I, I just want that clarification, just so that we're all the same. It's just.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's all, that's all I have, your worship.
Council Tully?
Just a couple of things to check. I, I know typically we're, we're kind of cautioned about using motions that, that sort of are set in negative connotation to them, or that they're, they're sort of set in the negative. And I know there's, there's a number of the proposed resolutions here that, that sort of do frame it in that negative context. So just maybe wanting to get clarification on, I guess procedurally, if that's going to be the correct way to do that.
It, it is procedurally. We had a, went back and forth with this once before. It's that you're just approving that we do not require this. So it's not a double negative. You're just approving that we won't require the criminal record check, that we won't require. And there, there is nothing procedurally that is wrong with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next item?
Right. And I guess that would be the only thing I need a resolution for is to accept those recommendations for the 2020 municipal election.
Okay, so that's a long resolution. Who's, who's going to put their name on that one?
Somebody has to do it. So, your worship, I would like to move the following to be approved for the 2020 municipal election. One, that a criminal record checks not be required by candidates when finally nomination papers. Two, that the Legend Center be located, located at 701 Centennial Boulevard, be used as the polling place for the 2020 municipal election. Three, the council approves the advanced poll dates, times, and locations for the 2020 municipal election be accepted as follows. Date, time, name, poll, name. Wednesday, October 28th, 2020, poll address, 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., Brian King Center, 202, 8th Avenue North. Thursday, October 29th, 2020, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Diamond House Care Home at 700 Ballster, Ballsters Crescent. Thursday, October 29th, 2020, 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., Menonite Care, Special Care Home, 2001, 201 Centennial Boulevard. Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Brian King Center, 202, 8th Avenue North. Wednesday, November 4th, 2020, 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Brian King Center, 202, 8th Avenue North. Wednesday, November 4th, 2020, 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Brian King Center, 202, 8th Avenue North. Number four, that the pre, the occupations of candidates on nomination papers and ballots are not, not be required. Five, that the 2020 candidate ballots continue to be listed in alphabetical order by surname. Six, that the voters be registered at the polls on Election Day. Seven, that council authorizes remuneration for election officials for the 2020 general election as follows. Supervising Returning Officer, $19 an hour. Deputy Returning Officer, $18 an hour. Poll Clerk Information Officer, $16 an hour. Training for all positions, $40 a day. Eight, the council continues to meet for the regular meetings of council on Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, and Monday, October 26th, 2020, noting that administration is only to provide information that requires immediate attention. And that council cancels the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, October 19th, 2020. Also, that candidates will refrain from volunteering for city facilitated events during the period between nomination day, October 7th, 2020, and election day, November 9th, 2020. I so moved.
Okay, thank you. Well done. Do we have a second here? Councilor Beck? Is there any further questions or comments with any of this? Hearing that, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Next item?
Oh, grabbed that one. July 2020 Committee of the Whole, or am I? Okay. So my next item was the resuming council at the Brian King Center on July 13th for our first Committee of the Whole Meeting. We do, we will be able to set it up, so we can have about 27 people in there. We'll have social distancing in there, and I guess, I don't know if I need any resolution of council with that, but we are going to try the July meetings at the Brian King Center.
Do we need a resolution because we're changing the location?
I can advertise. I can advertise that just through public notice.
Okay, so we don't need a resolution for that, though?
No, I don't require one.
Okay. Okay, do any questions about that? Okay, then, thank you.
You're welcome.
Fire chief? Austin, are you there? Fire Chief Austin?
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Technology is wonderful. Well, that's a, that was a hard act to follow. Good evening, Mayor Spence, members of council. I have before you a summary of the proposals that went out for our new water tanker apparatus. Went out for approximately a seven-week tender, which closed on June 16th on SaaS tenders. Results of that are in front of you. We had five, six different bids from five different manufacturers, and we have a recommendation before you for which one our committee. And I guess before we get to that, I'd really like to pass on, just so mayor and council know how hard that the committee did work, and we got membership to, basically all of our firefighters had input into this specification. And then the committee for putting the bid together, which was quite extensive and, and going over it. It was a lot of work, so hats off to them. And the fruits of their hard work are in front of you in a recommendation.
Okay, I see the recommendation. Council Shram?
I'd like to make the motion that the Healy Fire Truck Incorporated be awarded the tender to build a water tender appar- I'd like to make the motion that the Healy Fire Truck Incorporated be awarded the tender to build a water tender apparatus for the Warm and Fire Rescue at the cost of $338,562 before taxes. I so move.
Do we have a second there for that? Counselor Tully? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fire Chief Austin. Okay, motion to file administration reports. Counselor Tully?
I'll make the motion to file administration reports for June 22nd, 2020 as presented.
Do we have a second there? Counselor Jones? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Moving down to council reports. Oh, you have mine in front of you? Is there someone there that wants to make a motion for that one? Counsel, Counsel Philchuck?
I'll make the motion to accept the mayor's report for June 22nd, 2020, and the report to be filed as presented.
A second there? Counselor Shram, is there any questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Council on Table, starting with Counselor Shram?
Well, thank you, your worship. There hasn't been a whole lot for me, but we did have a rock meeting on the 17th of June. And it was a meeting that was to help facilitate the difficult discussions that we had at the previous meeting in May. And we came to a compromise and we worked things out. And it was a very good meeting. I thought both the city of Saskatoon and the RM Corman Park did a tremendous job in working through some things. And, and also there is going to be a communication process that the the Rock Committee is going to do to facilitate what it is we've done as far as the, the community plan. So I'm really looking forward to showing the community what we've done as a Rock Committee. And I think that it is long overdue. It's, we've done a lot of work there and I think it's, it's still a work in progress. There's still things to do, but I'm very much excited. I'm sure Counsel Philchuck has some more thoughts on that. But I think, your worship, as well as Counsel Philchuck, we've, we've talked with Brad and, and city manager Bob in regards in working this out. And I think for one, we can be proud that we are working together with other partners. The town of Osler, the city of Martinsville, the RM of Corman Park and the city of Saskatoon. I think it is long overdue and it's a good process that we've gone through. And I'm excited to see the future through it all.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Peterson?
I don't have much to report at this time. Other than the library board has had a, had a couple resignations from Rebecca and Rick. And so if anyone has, has anyone they know that might be interested in filling, filling those spots to, to tell them, to get them to come forward.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Peterson. Counsel Philchuck?
Good evening, Mayor Council. I guess a couple of things that I'd like to mention. First of all, I just got a, an email today from our school division that there's no school on October 26th, which is the provincial election, which is interesting because I think probably there's more voter turnout for the November 9th municipal election. Maybe I'm wrong with that, but that, I think they're doing it to have facilities like the school available to, to look at elections. So I just wanted to point that out. I was going to say during dawn's, but I, I want to say that more as, is that, if they're changing the format provincially and we're only a couple of weeks later, should it be at least considered for the municipal one too? So I, that's, that's beyond where, you know, beyond where I'm at. But at the same time, I want you to know that they've made that change already. But there will be no students in our buildings on October 26th. I went to a regional reconciliation meeting. It was, it was a good meeting because we talked a lot about mapping out of the communities and talking about how do we actually measure where we're at and maybe where we want to go. So they created a rubric to really look at the different aspects that show that the growth of your community in different areas. So there'll be more information like that coming out right now. We were almost a test and as they said, it's a green project to see, is this something that would be useful? And they're going to, to build on it right now. And that was through the Office of the Treaty Commissioner. So it was, it was well done and a good chance to really say, you know, when you make the comments, it's like we do in school. If we're going to make a comment that you're improving in something, well prove it. How did you improve? Where did you improve and what's happening? And the same way would be with, right now they're looking at reconciliation, regional reconciliation that way. So, so something that I look forward to coming up. Counselor Shram did a great job with the P4G. The only thing I'll mention is that, that, that spirit of compromise, that idea that we need to get to the end line is important, that we're working together. And let's, let's be realistic, most of the conflict or most of the challenges, not conflict, is really Saskatoon and Corman Park because it's, they're the ones growing at the pace. Most of our land and is spoken for that we're, we're moving forward to. But we're, we're a voice around there to start to see how we can really work as a region to really be the most attractive region in the area, in the province, in the country that we have a package together to say that we are a place that you want to invest. So good things are happening there as Counsel Shram mentioned. And just, uh, that's the only, yeah, that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Beck?
Thank you, Mayor Spence. So just two items to bring forward today. And they're both municipalities of Saskatchewan related. So this year I've had several committee meetings gearing up towards the, to our board meeting that's going to be held this Friday, June 26th. And my second item is that I through, through my position there of, of economic, pardon me, of, of environmental chairperson, I'll be hosting panel of environmental stakeholders with the municipalities of Saskatchewan on extending the life of your municipal landfill. So that's going to be on, on June 30th. So, yeah, so we have several guests set up for that. So definitely looking forward to that event and that is all that I have at this time.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jones?
Good evening. I attended on June 18th the Legends Board meeting and actually it was held in person with social distancing. So they set up space within the clubhouse to allow for that and it worked really well. It was kind of nice to be part of an in-person meeting again. So a few updates, the, the minutes are there from the last couple of meetings. I'm sure there'll be questions then, but you know, a couple of things. One, the restaurant is going to remain closed. They are going to look at, and they have already expanding the, the menu at the grab and go on the outside. And then just, you know, the other one is they had a pretty strong April, which, you know, again shows the strength of, I think that board and that management there around expenses, you know, making sure they're matching what they can spend with what their revenue sources are going to be. Yeah, so that's really all I have to report, but given the circumstances, still a pretty healthy organization.
Okay, thank you, Counsel John. Counsel Tully?
I don't, don't necessarily have anything major to report tonight. I just wanted to get some clarification just for the Thursday evening for the, the grad procession. And just what time are we going to be meeting at, around City Hall if we're going to be attending?
I would say somewhere right around 6:30. And we, Aaron, Aaron has made some signs for us. So we'll have some signs to hold on to to, as the procession goes by. Who plans to attend that evening? Okay, good. Great.
And just one other thing, just to kind of get a little bit maybe of information about before. City Manager Smith, you, you may not have any of this with you, sort of in front of you, at least at your fingertips. But I was just kind of wondering, when it comes to, you know, as we've sort of stepped into phase four now of the real Saskatchewan plan and just some of the, the impacts and some of the additional amenities that the city of Warm and, many of these programs that the city of Warm is going to be offering. And just sort of what maybe some of the ideas are of how we're going to get that information out to residents.
City Manager Smith?
You're correct. I don't have that in front of me right now. Are you talking phase four B, like part two of phase four?
No, I was thinking actually phase four and the, the first part of it with, with things like, I know the Spray Park and, and if there's any, you know, youth programming, anything like that, that's going to be potentially offered and, and what plans look like to maybe get that information out.
Well, we'll be, it'll be sent out through the Recreation Department like they would normally do for the programming. Although the programming will be limited for, for several reasons. A lot of the programming that they do require, you know, people to be in a, participating together, a lot of the children programs and things like that. As far as the Spray Park, it'll be opened up on, is it today it opened up? But soon, it's ready to go. Playground equipment, you know, we, it's, it's available. We took the signs down, put up additional signage that kind of gives rules around it. As far as the organi- like the organized ball fields and things like that, that hasn't been opened up yet till phase four B or two. Is there any other facilities that I could speak about that skate parks open and?
Actually, just one pointed clarification around the skate park. And is there anything out there that's, anything about restrictive numbers for utilization of the skate park that we know of, or is it something that it's just kind of whatever goes, goes?
It's like anything else. It's 30 people and it's regulated by the minister or that, the health authorities. So if there is, if there is more than 30 people and they're still supposed to be, you know, six feet apart, et cetera. If they're not abiding by those health orders, then the 1-855 number, they can, they can call. And then there will be a public health officer would visit the area.
Thank you for that, City Manager Smith.
And just to add to that, I do believe that the Recreation Facebook page has been putting out quite a bit of, they've been pumping out quite a bit of information about what we're doing here in Warmin. And I know our communications team, maybe, I know Aaron's been working on a update from council every couple of weeks. So maybe this is something and that should be coming up again this Friday. So maybe that's another place where we could put out a full list and what that looks like for the city of Warmin. And again, that's through social media though.
Yeah, just for clarification, first of all, my question was more along the lines of, since we had our Committee of the Whole meeting last Monday, the phase four, part one, you know, the, the dates actually were announced after that. So as this council really haven't had a, a significance or anything, there hasn't been a lot of formalized communication coming our direction on that.
Okay, and I can certainly speak to Paul about that as well. Our Recreation Manager to make sure that council has all the information of the things that are opening up and, and when they're opening up for sure, as well as to the public.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, well, thank you. We'll move down into correspondence next. We have in front of us just a letter from our MP, Kelly Block. And that's all we have for correspondence. Is there someone that wants to make a motion to receive? Counselor Jones?
Make the motion to council receive the correspondence from a letter from MP Kelly Block on June 22nd, 2020. Correspondence is to be filed as presented.
Second there? Counselor Shram? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Moving down to other reports, we have in front of us the Legends Board Meeting Agenda. Legends Board Meeting Agenda for June 18th. Minutes, February 27th, May 25th. And financials. Can someone make a motion to accept those reports? Counsel Philchuck?
I'll make the motion to council accept the reports and meeting minutes for the February and May 2020 from the Legends Golf Course Board and the report and minutes are to be filed as presented.
Do we have a second there? Counselor Beck? And I'll open the floor for any questions. Counsel Philchuck?
Actually, I have a quick question about the previous one too with Kelly Blocks. It just, what is the amount of the gas tax? Would, how much is that that she's talking, we get?
City Manager Smith?
Sorry about that. It's about 400 and a little over $400,000.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. It, it didn't have a number in there, so I was just asking about that. I was also had one quick question about the golf course one too. And just the impact of staffing, what, how are the numbers compared to last year to this year? Is I, I have some questions about the, the restaurant not opening. So for food services, what type of staffing do they have? Is that, so it's no serving obviously and no carts, right? Like there's no cart of people there?
Yeah, there's no, there's nobody out serving from a cart. As far as how many staffing they're down, I'm not sure, Gary.
Okay.
What, what that is, but they are down, they are, they aren't using as many hours as they were.
Right, okay.
But I, but I don't, I don't know what those numbers are.
Do we have any other questions? Counselor Beck?
Yeah. Brian, with the, pardon me, with the minutes there, it, it was basically discussed about membership discounts. And, and one of those considerations was going to be by, by distance away or let's say distance outside of the community. Is that still going to go forward here in 2020 or is that going to be postponed with, with the COVID type situation? And what's the strategic planning situation?
So the, I believe that was to be taken to the Strategic Planning Group as ideas around, basically around marketing. It hasn't been implemented so that, that, you know, you just seen from the minutes were captured as an idea, I think back in February before. You know, COVID hit and really the, the schedule of meetings was disrupted. So those were ideas that were going to be taken forward to the strategic planning. It hasn't been set yet when the strategic planning will, will, will proceed. I don't think, I don't think it will be until the fall with that strategic planning. If, if it goes ahead of all, and the operating ended up just missing here. Because, you know, as you, as you can imagine, a lot of, a lot of the, a lot of the resources have just been dedicated to running the, the current year's operations. But I can report back. I, I believe we've, we haven't set a date for the next strategic plan yet. And if it was going to happen, it was, I believe it was going to happen without a facilitator, without the cost of a facilitator this time.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, moving down to accounts for approval. Do we have a motion there? Counselor Shram?
Your worship, I would like to move the council approve the city accounts as presented by checks numbered 23118 to 23209 for the total amount of $1,059,268.81. And the payroll vouchers numbered 10762 to 10808 in the amount of $76,222.45 June 22nd, 2020. I so move.
Second there please? Counselor Peterson? Is there any questions? All in favor? Okay, thank you. A motion to adjourn? Counselor Jones?
Motion to adjourn the Monday, June 22nd, 2020 Regular Meeting of Council.
Second there? Counselor Tully? All in favor? Okay, we're adjourned. Did I see? Okay, we're adjourned and I see Counselor Peterson has been.